Eric.
Hello, Steve.
How are you?
We weren't expecting you, so I'm glad you could make it.
No, tonight I'll be here. Next two months.
Okay, I thought you had left for New York, so until we went to Zoom, I didn't think you would be here.
That's all right. We got it figured out. On these prints. This is the same company that gave us. Oh, six, eight months ago. A heads up on their expansion, am I right?
Yes, and he keeps, uh, he keeps adding on, so.
Well, it looked like he's taken down part of the old building and putting up brand new, so. I'd go ahead with that, you know? How's Megan doing?
He's doing well. He's gonna be, um. Working up a plan to come back to, uh, work soon.
Very good. And I take it the little one is doing good?
Yes, everybody's good.
Hey, Eric, are you, are we gonna remain blocked on video? You're on mute.
You're not able to show video at this point?
No, it says I'm not allowed.
That was not intentional.
The joys of Zoom.
I comb my hair for nothing?
That would appear to be the case.
Oh, boy.
That got even more fun. It might be baked into this particular meeting.
I think I have it, so your video should work now.
Yep. Thank you. So what did you, what's going on in City Hall? You got the election.
Yeah, they, he took over the council chambers and they're actually storing ballots in there, so we're not, uh. As non-certified election workers, we, we can't use that space.
Got it. But Steve could go in.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, I gotta go across the street this time. I got a long walk. Let's see, let's see, thirteen, fourteen.
Matthew, on the, um, road naming project?
Yeah.
They have. The builder of the new house that's kind of driving the need for a new road name is upset that he's not able to just pick the name. And he's withdrawn his application to build the house.
Oh, really?
So we can table that. I think he's gonna propose his own driveway or realize that it's more expensive than it's worth. And go back to his original plan, but we'll deal with, he wants us to wait on that.
Okay, so that, that issue is scratched for now.
Yes, it is.
So I can just move to table that. Or propose that we table it and have somebody move to table it.
We can take care of that.
Did you hear from everybody? Did Rhonda hear from everybody here?
I think everybody except for Darren.
Except for Darren?
Except for Darren, yeah. All right, we have some more attendees that I need to let in, so.
Okay.
Darren's one of them.
I was wondering what was going on. I'm watching you guys. I was like. I can't, there's no, there's no option for me to come in. There's no option for me to join, right?
We don't want you.
Don't think the Grinch, not Santa.
Okay, so this looks like all of us to me. All right, so I think let's get started. Um. Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the October thirteenth, twenty twenty, meeting of the Auburn Planning Board to order. Back to Zoom again, unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances, but I assume we will, we will be back in person soon. Um, I'd like to start with roll call, please.
Evan Seer.
Thank you.
Dana Staples.
Thank you.
Steven Martelli.
Thank you.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Thanks.
Riley Bergeron.
There's only one left. Oh, you're on mute, Darren. I don't know that your sound's working. Anyway, um, and I'm Matthew Duval. Um, this evening, we have, um. Mr. Staples and Mr. Bergeron, who are associate members, and.
Point of order? I'm no longer an associate member.
Oh, well, we'd like to welcome Mr. Staples to the ranks of full member. Um, that gives us. Six full members present and one vacant spot, so I, with the permission of the board, I would like to promote Mr. Bergeron to full member for this meeting. And I'm gonna take silence as an affirmation of that. First item is the minutes from. August eleventh, twenty twenty, meeting and the September fifteenth, twenty twenty, meeting. Um, I need a motion to approve. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Eric, can you do a roll call vote, please? You're on mute.
Riley Bergeron? Yes. Evan Seer?
Yes.
Aaron Finnegan? I think you're, I'm not sure your sound is working. If you can give us a thumbs up, Darren, we'll, or a thumbs down. Dana Staples?
Yes.
Stacy LeBlanc?
Uh, yes, I'll just note that I wasn't there for the August eleventh meeting.
Thank you.
Steven Martelli?
Yes. And I think that we have it.
I mean, yes, too. Um, great, so we'll proceed to item number three on the agenda, just site plan special exception. This is a return of an item that was tabled at the September fifteenth meeting. Um, the Lewiston Auburn Water Pollution Control Authority proposal to change current city agreement and the nineteen ninety-two Plan of Planning Board approvals. After a successful pilot with the main DEP to evaluate how the facility may be operated with composting only Lopka, Lopka-produced anaerobically digested solids with no odor control system. Uh, so there are some items left on the tables. Staff, you wanna report back on those?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Facility has been oper- in operation since nineteen ninety-three. Over time, with technology and regulatory changes. Uh, the facility has had to adapt and recently completed a pilot project with main DP. Uh, from September of twenty nineteen to January of twenty twenty. Evaluate operating as Chairman Duval said with composting only Lopka-produced anaerobically digested solids. Uh, with no odor control system. Pilot was successful and Lopka secured approval to operate that way for main DP in June of twenty twenty. Board reviews this amendment, reviewed this amendment, uh, last month. Uh, we've included last month's staff report in, uh, as an attachment and held a public hearing. You did hear from some residents during that public hearing and the board chose to table that item. Um, with requests for specific additional information and/or conditions. Uh, the first was that Lopka proposed a way to limit truck traffic accessing the facility from Route one thirty-six. Uh, one thirty-six end of Penley Corner Road that avoids them kind of cutting across through country roads that really have not. Been built for that traffic and, uh, in impacting more residents. We've spoken with Lopka staff and Travis Peaslee is online tonight and can answer questions. Uh, I suggest that we do a condition of approval. Um, that requires them to, uh, ensure that happens and, uh, Lopka has agreed to. Ensure that any contracts for trucking services as well as their own trucks, um, will obligate the driver to using the, uh. One thirty-six and the Penley Corner Road. We had asked them to provide an ambient odor survey of the Lopka compost facility that they had. Uh, that they had done, uh, during the review, um, by an expert in measuring odors. Um, invited that combo, that, uh, odor report, um, as part of the packet for this month's meeting. And, uh, it was, the odors were measured much more close to the facility than what the ordinance would require. Um, but they didn't indicate any odors that were above odor threshold in the ordinance. One other item related to odors, um, is we had to clarify the ownership of the land. As Lopka had purchased the land and the farm in nineteen ninety-two, given a life estate to the, uh, farmer. That extends to his significant other, uh, in the event that he passes away first. The compost facility and the surrounding land, including the farm, are in fact owned by Lopka. Um, but as I said, Roger Gothier and his significant other have a life estate on the property. So the reason for that clarification, in addition to just understanding the ownership, was. To understand how our odor standards would apply to the property. Uh, I don't think it was ever envisioned, this situation was ever envisioned when the odor ordinance was being, uh, being drafted. We've talked with Lopka and it, it would be reasonable to, um. Measure the odor standards from the property lines as, uh, required by the ordinance, but in the case of the house that's occupied by somebody else. Uh, we could easily measure the odor standard and have a condition of approval, uh, based on the board's approval. And we measure the odor standard around the Gothier residence that sits on Lopka property. Um, at a hundred feet around the residence to provide some buffer for that residential building. Uh, Lopka is comfortable with that, and I think I would ensure that any concerns about any residents being impacted by odors that exceed the standard. Um, could be addressed through enforcement if necessary. Staff had suggested a set of findings last month. Um, we've suggested that same set of findings. Um, with the addition of, um, standards that would address the odor measurement around the, uh, Gothier residence. Um, also would, uh, ensure that Lopka has a contractual agreement. That obligates trucks serving the facility to use the one thirty-six access road and that, um. Upon deactivation of the facility, should that happen at any time in the future. Need to provide a plan that includes future use or demolition of the buildings and structures and disposal of any new waste materials on the site. Um, including but not limited to any sewage sludges, compost materials, amendment here, materials, equipment and vehicle. With that, staff has recommended that the board, uh, approve the proposal subject to those three conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, um. At this time, we have, uh, any questions for staff?
No.
Seeing none, I'd like to hear from the applicant.
I've invited Travis in as a participant, as a panelist rather, and he should be with us momentarily. And it's Travis. Travis Peaslee from Lopka, um, you met him at last month's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Peaslee.
Yes, thanks for having me. Sorry, uh, has it kicked me off? Are there some questions from the board, Eric?
You off to? They, they didn't have any specific questions?
Okay.
Uh, you can summarize anything you'd like to add and, and go from there.
I think Eric did a great job summarizing, um, you know, if the, the last meeting, there were the couple requests and I hope to have addressed it with, um. Proposed amendments, but, um, if there are more concerns, I'm, you know, happy to hear them and address them.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Peaslee?
So?
Okay, hearing none, um, thank you. Uh, we will now move to the public comment. Section of this hearing, I will need a motion.
So we did confirm before the meeting, the doors are unlocked here at City Hall, so as the notice stated. People are able to enter the building and we do not currently have any members of the public here.
Okay.
Uh, so moved, just the same.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Just raise and hold your hand up. Thank you. Eric, we had unanimous consent to open that.
Thank you.
There's nobody from the public present. What about these two attendees, Eric?
So the, the two attendees are, uh, Don Buto and, uh, Mike Otto that are here for the next item.
Okay, great, thank you.
Motion to close the public session.
What?
I'll make a motion to close the public session.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, discussion among the board. Anybody have any thoughts or comments on this?
I, I think they ticked off all the boxes we asked them to tick off at last time, um.
Yep.
So. I don't think there's much to say on this one.
Agreed, yeah, nice job. This worked pretty well for me.
Okay, um. Excellent, so I would, um. Then entertain a motion.
Let me read this one off. I make a motion to approve the proposed changes to the Lewiston Auburn Water Pollution Control Authority Lopka agreements with the city as presented in the application. And cover letter dated August fifth, twenty twenty, supplemented via email from Travis Peaslee dated nine seventeen twenty twenty. Located at two thirty Penley Corner Road, PID one thirty-seven dash zero three two in the Agricultural Resource Protection Zoning District. With the stipulations, one, upon deactivation of the facility, a plan shall be provided to the city of Auburn that includes future use or demolition of the buildings and structures. And disposal of any new waste materials on the site, including but not limited to sewage sludges, compost, amendment materials, equipment and vehicles. Two, compliance with a commitment in an email dated nine seventeen twenty twenty to make contractual provisions that require trucks serving the facility. To use the Route one thirty-six access to Penley Corner Road. And three, due to the unique ownership situation, the odor ordinance shall be applied. Uh, to measure odors from the parcel lines as prescribed by ordinance, but also protect the Gothier residence. Which occupies space within the Lopka parcel by requiring that odors will also be controlled such that they do not exceed the odor threshold. Within a buffer that extends one hundred feet around the Gothier residence on the Lopka parcel during the terms of his life estate. Recorded in the Andersgoggin County Registry of Deeds Book two eight five. Recorded in the Andersgagen County Registry of Deeds Book two eight five nine, page two zero nine.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a second. Eric, can you do, or is there any discussion before we go to a vote? So Eric, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Stacy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Evan Seer.
Yes.
Dana Staples.
Yes.
Ryan Burge, Riley Bergeron.
Yes.
Aaron Finnegan. Steven Martelli.
Yes.
And Matthew DuVille.
Yes. All right, thank you. That finishes that item. So, Mr. Finnegan. Just to clarify, since your audio is not working, if you wish to say something or indicate it, you can use the chat and I can repeat it to the board. Okay. Um.
Put up a sign.
All right, so we will move on now to item number four, special exception, public hearing. On the proposed expansion of Future Guard at one oh one Merrill Road, PID one eight six dash zero one five. To construct a forty seven thousand four hundred and fifty six square foot of additional. Space with adjustments to parking on both sides, relocation of the showroom and new parking spaces proposed at the rear of the site. This will increase the total building size to two hundred and eighty five thousand five hundred and eighty square feet. Staff?
As this project has been before you a number of times and it just continues to grow and require additional space. The reason that it's before you is because the proposed expansion is greater than ten thousand square feet. Not necessarily because of the use, the use is a permitted use in the industrial zoning district. And. The planning board has already approved a number of expansions, including one expansion in. June of twenty twenty as the most recent one. And they're looking to add an additional forty seven thousand four hundred and fifty six square feet. To that approval, so they can continue with construction this fall and add the additional space. You reviewed an expansion. Our staff reviewed a small expansion in October of twenty seventeen. October of twenty eighteen, there was another expansion that fell within the less than ten percent footprint. April of two thousand nineteen, the planning board reviewed and approved. Larger expansion of fourteen thousand square feet. October of nineteen. An expansion of thirty six thousand square feet. Was approved at the building in two phases that were comprised of eighteen thousand square feet at the rear. Corner of the existing building and about eighteen thousand square feet of additional production space. For product assembly and finish operation. March of twenty twenty, there was a small equipment shed approved at the rear of the property at a staff level. And June of twenty twenty, board approved. Fairly substantial reconfigurations of space and the proposed use within the building. And a fourteen or fifteen thousand square foot addition. For additional manufacturing area as well as twenty new parking spaces proposed at the, at the rear of the site. That proposal included the twenty new employees. At our same employees that will. Moving into the space that's being expanded today, really what's driving the additional space. Is the need for more room to install the equipment that they had planned to use. Total number of parking spaces approved by the board in twenty twenty included a hundred and thirty one spaces. On site with three of those being designated as handicap spaces. They are in the process of moving twenty five to thirty employees from this site. To a painting facility that they own on Omni Circle. But some of the staff that's been working at the site will be leaving. Current site contains a hundred and seventy two parking spaces. Which will be reduced to a hundred and fifty two, so a reduction of twenty. But with a hundred and ten employees on site during the largest of the two overlapping shifts. The required number of spaces would actually be fifty five, which they exceed by, by a substantial amount. The dimensional standards for the district. Not more than forty percent of the total lot area can be covered by the buildings, total acreage for the parcel is twenty seven acres. Roughly ten point eight acres would be allowed for lot coverage. The building footprint is proposed to be six point five acres and meets that requirement. The setback requirements are met for the proposed expansion in the existing building. Landscaping was something that we had talked about at a previous meeting. Needs to be an amount equal to ten percent of the area of the parking lot. The applicant has provided a break kind of the landscaping in the cover letter. Parking area is just under forty five thousand square feet. Ten percent of that would be just under five thousand square feet and. We've met that requirement with the proposed site plan. The ordinance also requires that the perimeter of the principal building, except for entrances, loading doors be landscaped. In an amount equal to twenty percent of the building footprint. Front and sides of the building is where we've tried to emphasize the landscaping, it doesn't do a lot of good for the traveling public on the side or rear. So twenty percent of the two hundred and thirty eight thousand square foot building would require forty seven thousand square feet. There should be a total of fifty two thousand square feet of landscaping with the proposed addition that's being proposed tonight. And much of the building was constructed prior to the nineteen sixties before we had that standard. Hundred and fifty thousand plus square feet was constructed prior to that. But the landscaping plan shown is accounting for twenty percent of the new addition area. Previously approved additions since we've had an ordinance requiring that. And there's also a large forested buffer area around the site and at the rear of the site. Side and rear lot lines between non-residential uses shall be planted with evergreen trees. In this case, we don't have any side or rear lot lines. That, but a residential area. And there are no rear lot lines technically on this parcel because it is a corner lot. And we have two fronts and two sides effectively instead of having a rear. The proposed improvements will result in an increase in impervious area of about forty two thousand square feet. The total will be just over four hundred thousand at four hundred and one thousand three hundred and forty four square feet. During the June twenty twenty approval and again with this proposal. EP has required that the project be reviewed under the redevelopment standards. And with the proposed addition, some of the change from parking lot area to roof area as well as landscaping. The. Increase in stormwater runoff quality or quantity meets the redevelopment standard. One of the challenges with the site and what's been the limitation on the. Expansion of the building is that the site is so flat that it's very difficult to treat stormwater. At the elevation that the building sits at. Because there's nowhere to drain it to a lower elevation in most cases. So this one has really been driven by. Whatever design and expansion that can be completed under the redevelopment standard and not under the new stormwater standard. That's acceptable to main DEP, we've approved other projects that way locally as well and. We've collected comments from various departments on this proposal, which were not. Really at all different than the June proposal. Police has no concerns, Auburn Water and Sewer is available to service the site, no concerns, fire and code. Don't have concerns about the exterior layout and they'll review specifically the building construction. And life safety standards for the structure itself when it gets to the building permit stage. Public Services has no concerns. And as the airport has noted with any approval within the airport area of influence. If they're going to use cranes to erect the building at any point. They just need to notify the airport so they can plan their operations around that for the temporary interruption. Staff has provided a list of findings in the staff report. And we believe that it meets the ordinance standards as well as the findings that are listed for site plan and special exception. And we recommend that the board approve the project subject to bonding and inspection fees being paid. And a condition that requires the notification to the airport. And just provides the phone number to make it easy for the applicant to find that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Planning board have any questions for staff?
No.
No, I have one clarification. There's a note in the staff report that the airport was not notified the last time cranes were in there.
That. That was true for one of the additions, the airport manager had said that he was not notified. I believe that was two additions ago, but I could, I could double check that. We want to make it absolutely clear in the conditions and make it easy for them to contact that by putting in the phone number right in there.
Okay, great, thank you.
That is a standard that, a requirement that exists even in the absence of a condition, but it just looked at front and center by adding it here.
Yep, understood. Great, having no further questions for staff from the planning board, I'd invite the applicant to come in.
We should have Michael Gatto here now, he's the consultant that proposed the addition for Don Buto, who is also here. And is the owner of Future Guard.
Great, thank you.
We don't, staff has done a great job with the presentation as usual. I think they've covered most any things. The last issue about the crane, I believe that was with phase two construction, that was several. Meetings ago that that happened. So we do know and the, and the contract is well aware that we need to notify the airport and we'll make sure that happens. So with that, I, I can answer any questions that the board might have.
Any questions from the board for applicant?
No. We, we did have one of butters. We did have one of butters come and come in from a residential neighbor that lives next to the tunnel in daycare. And she was supportive of the project and didn't have any concern.
Great, thank you. All right, so we'd like to thank the applicant, hearing no. Questions from the board and we'd like to move on to the public comment section. Of this. Public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public comment section of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, show hands. That's unanimous. Eric, do we have anyone present?
There is no one present here at City Hall.
Thank you.
To close the public input section of the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous again. So discussion, planning board discussion, anybody have any thoughts or comments on this proposal?
No, I think we've seen. You've seen so much growth out there and. Anything that had, has come up in a previous meeting with regard to expansions has really been covered in, in this one, so.
I'm glad you said that because that's kind of what I was thinking when I was reading through this, I mean. It's very similar to what we saw in June, just from my standpoint, maybe not so much theirs, but.
If I may, we haven't changed much, we were just trying to finalize the development potential of this site. And we will be back to you next month and there'll be more buildings coming on.
Oh boy.
We, we'll be doing different, different lots and different buildings because we got to deal with stormwater a different way. As you can see, as we've been tracking the stormwater, we've gotten close to the point where we can't do anymore at the current location, so we'll be doing more. Expansion and we'll be coming back. Business has been very good for Dawn and it seems to be growing, growing. And it's going to continue to grow by the looks, so I'll be busy this winter and we'll be back to you.
Thank you.
Well, well done, congratulations, that's great news.
Any other thoughts, comments, discussion from the board?
All right, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to, I make a motion to approve the site plan. For phase four of the proposed expansion of Future Guard at one oh one Merrill Road. Parcel ID number one eight six dash zero one five to construct. A forty seven thousand four hundred fifty six square foot of additional space. With adjustments to parking on both sides, relocation of the showroom and new parking spaces proposed at the rear of the site. This will increase total building size to.
Second.
Any discussion before we vote? Hearing none, Eric, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Dana Staples.
Yes.
Steven Martelli.
Yes.
Evan Seer.
Yes.
Riley Bergeron.
Yes.
Aaron Finnegan. Stacy LeBlanc.
Yes.
And Matthew DuVille.
Yes. All right, thank you all. So now. Item five, and just to note that staff indicated to me before the start of the meeting that. The applicant has withdrawn his application and so for the time being, we can. Table this item. So I would need a motion for that.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second that.
All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Move on to item six, election of the vice chairperson. At this time, I would entertain nominees for. That position and keeping in mind that you can nominate yourself. So we've had one nomination. Of Evan Seer. Mr. Seer, do you accept that nomination?
Um. I get if, so only, I guess if no one else is interested, honestly, I'd like to see it go to. A member of the board that. Has, has less tenure only because it's a, it's a good opportunity to learn some of the ways that the, the board operates. But.
As a young member, I would agree with that. I've learned a lot about how the board works by being chair and I will note that. Come spring, we will want, or come February, we will elect a new chair of the planning board. As we do every February. This would be a good chance to. Get a little. Information, I mean, about. What it's like to chair, although I will say there's not much to do for the vice chair if the chair is around.
As long as Evan's happy to do it, I'm happy to have Evan do this.
So Mr. Seer, hearing no further nominations, will you accept that?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so we, Mr. Seer's been nominated and we all need to vote on Mr. Seer becoming the vice chairman. We'll probably do a roll call vote for this, Eric.
Steven Martelli?
Yes.
Dana Staples?
Yes.
Riley Bergeron?
Yes.
Aaron Finnegan? Stacy LeBlanc?
Yes.
And Matthew Duvo.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Seer.
Thank you. You look so happy, Evan.
It's like. It's not a part, it's not a full term, but this is, I think this is like my fourth or fifth term as. An an officer, it's kind of like. Next time someone else has got to do it in February.
You do such a good job.
Yeah.
Well, like Matt says, the you know, the only reason I'm really okay with this because he's right, as long as he's around, I don't have to do anything.
And I have no plans. Okay, so thank you, moving on to that, item number seven. We had talked about doing some work on our policies and procedures because of staffing issues. With Megan being out on leave, we will have elected to delay that until November. Which brings us to item number eight, public comment, so I'd like to open the public comment period. Eric, we still without public?
Still no members of the public here.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that there's nobody here to speak, I'd like to move on to item nine. Planning board items for discussion, does anyone have in on the board have any items they would like to put out for discussion?
Sure, so at a previous meeting, I was nominated to be on the charter review commission, charter commission review. I'm sorry, comprehensive plan, not charter. And so I just, I was supposed to give updates on that and so far there are no meetings, so there are no updates, but I thought I'd just say that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, I have one. I've been working as part of the mayor's ad hoc committee to do some reorganization of committees for. The city and there may be some changes coming, we have our final sort of meeting. Tomorrow and then it will go before city council, all things being equal, I think before their November meeting, is that correct, Eric?
Yes, it should be for the November, for a November meeting.
Which will affect our operations probably in the and the role of the chair a little bit in the new year. So I don't know when those would go into effect, right away?
I I don't know and you know more about what the changes are than I do at this point. We're going to be briefed on them soon, probably next week after the council meeting at the department managers' meeting.
Got it, so just to summarize the changes are structurally a number of. The the goal of the changes are to actually increase communication among the boards and committees with city council and staff. In the city of Auburn, the impacts for the planning board is that the chair will sit on a board that will meet, I think quarterly, it's not finalized yet. And with the chair of a few of the other committees and also some people from city council. Where we will communicate. About various projects that pertain to the planning board work. On the city, so more on that as the proposal becomes finalized. Um, any more items for discussion from the board or questions about that?
No.
Alright, seeing that, we'll move on to item ten miscellaneous. Upcoming items for November.
So as you heard from Michael Gatto, Future Guard will be proposing. A small three lot subdivision at their site at the corner of Merrill and Hotel. That'll open up a couple of opportunities for additional buildings that are intended to serve the needs of Future Guard. But they can be constructed at elevations that will allow them to meet. New stormwater, new development stormwater standards instead of redevelopment. And potentially some really substantial additions, it's incredible, it's an incredible success story out there. With the amount of business that they've been able to capture during this this last six or eight month period. The city council has forwarded a proposal. To expand the form based code district in our urban downtown residential neighborhoods. Justin Corrier, our urban development specialist, briefed the council last Monday. On a proposed area of expansion, this is something that the board. Had really talked about during the original adoption of the form based code, but I think what. What really held it back was there was concern that if we went too big, covered too much area out of the gate, we were likely to encounter. You know, more potential for opposition and the potential for not making any progress towards the form based code. So they really pared it down to the core of our downtown, tried to get the standards in place. See how they work and the council's very interested in expanding those. One of the biggest changes is in many of our downtown residential neighborhoods, urban residential neighborhoods. We have sort of outdated zoning standards that include twenty five foot front setbacks, even in neighborhoods where the rest of the. Houses are right up on the sidewalk and that's really the character of the neighborhood that would that. A lot of people want to promote that interaction with the street. Form based code would allow that and it would also allow a little bit more flexibility. In small home based businesses, most of them are allowable now. But some of those would become permitted uses where they're special except for uses. So Justin will be sending out an email, he's put together a good PIS based story map page. To kind of highlight what he would recommend as changes. We shared that with the council on Monday and that will come out in an email here in the next, within the next few days. So you guys can take a look at it ahead of us actually scheduling a public input or public hearing session for the November meeting. One other thing is, it looks like we are going to be able to access some funding from the state of Maine. That we were not anticipating for transportation improvements that relate to the heads up pedestrian safety. Project that we did in twenty nineteen. Justin has also been working on sort of a menu of improvements to the Court Street, Kerner Street. Area to improve pedestrian safety. We should find out very soon in advance of the November meeting certainly. What we might be able to access for state funding, it sounds like there's. Most of our downtown and transportation based projects are either locally funded or largely they're funded through ATRC. Which is the Andrus Coggin Transportation Resource Center, the towns of Auburn, Lewiston, Thibades and Lisbon. Work together as a committee to allocate the limited federal and state funding that comes down. For roadway improvements, we do, we have a scoring process and this is funding totally outside of that. Auburn and Lewiston are the only two communities that are part of that. Participate in the heads up program, but it looks like there'll be a small amount of funding for a project in twenty twenty one. And a larger pool of funding for a project in twenty twenty three. And I think we'll be in front of you if we're having. Difficulty prioritizing those from the report to get some feedback on which ones we should go for. I I don't know, I found, I got a voicemail this morning that said we were in the running for those fundings. Based on our reports and what we had talked to Patrick Adams at M D O T about a few weeks ago. And it's just, it was just confirmed on Friday that there won't be funding for those two programs. Talked to him this week and get a sense of the scale. We have a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in local tax increment financing funds. Go towards downtown pedestrian improvements in twenty twenty one. And we hope that the state will add to that, add another component or two to that, that investment.
That's great.
And that's, that's all I have for miscellaneous items.
We're all on mute.
Yep, that that brings us to item number eleven. Augmentation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, if you were wondering who that good looking young man is on the bottom of the screen, that's Brian, our IT network specialist. And he was helping us broadcast the video tonight and had to be a participant in order to do that.
Alright.
I just wonder who that was.
Thanks, Brian.
Alright, thanks Brian, thanks everybody.
Have a good night.
Take care, everybody, alright, bye bye.
Have a happy holiday.